Okay, ladies, get started. If you'd all please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, my name's Anthony Doyle, I'm town moderator. Today is Thursday, June 26th. We're here for a special town meeting called by a warrant issued by the select board. Madam Clerk, has this warrant been properly posted?
Uh, yes, it has.
And do we have a quorum tonight? Thank you. Joining me on the stage tonight, we have newly elected select board member Anthony Pagliarulo. We have other select board members, Dan Esco, John Boyle, Chairman Robert Bishop. We have acting town manager Terry Williams. To my left, I'm sorry, and we also have town council Timothy Zesson. To my left, we have the finance committee William Droshene, Chairman, and Thomas Irwin as well. And we have our town clerk Heather Hunt. If you wish to address the assembly, please make sure you raise your hand and be recognized before you speak. We will try to give everybody an opportunity to be heard. Please identify yourself by name and by address. This is a meeting for the town of Dalton. I know that we have plenty of people who are not residents of Dalton. We ask that they sit over in this section so we don't confuse when we get to voting who is and is not a resident. And please also understand that this meeting is being recorded. Please keep your voice up so we can hear you. I believe we do have some microphones around for people to use when you address the assembly. To see if the town will raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide a sum of money for the purpose of defraying charges and expenses within the Dalton Police Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshene.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,631,083 to fund the police department operating budget for fiscal year 2026, of which $173,339 shall be for expenses and $1,457,744 shall be for salaries.
I second it.
Article One has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? In the front, Mr. Walto.
Ken Walto, 48 Raymond Drive. I noted that this budget is up almost a half a million dollars in the last five years. That's entirely too much. I am only prepared, Mr. Moderator, to vote for the last year's appropriation, which I believe was $1,349,000.
I motion for a secret ballot on this topic.
There's a motion to set the voting on this article to secret ballot. That requires a vote of the assembly. It is not a debatable motion. All those in favor of a secret ballot signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no.
No.
We're gonna have to count them. Okay, all those in favor of voting by secret ballot, please raise your cards. Now, all those who are against a secret ballot and do not wish the secret ballot, One hundred and sixty-two noes and one hundred and one yeses. Any further discussion on Article One?
Don Davis, Kirchner Road, there was some conversation about they want to level fund it from last year, but I think we got some tremendous police officers. I think that, you know, the cost of living's up and I think everybody deserves a raise. So, not funding this budget, or trying to level fund it, would say our policemen aren't doing a good, policemen and women, excuse me, aren't doing a good job and they don't deserve a raise. That's all I want to say. We've got a terrific department.
Thank you.
Hi, Lynn Clements, Kirchner Road. I wrote it so I wouldn't ramble. Recently, the quick coordinated efforts of Dalton dispatchers Betsy and Tiana, Sergeant Duryea and Officer Baroli, as well as Dalton Fire and other teams undoubtedly saved the lives of two young boys. The twelve-year-olds were trapped up to their waists in quicksand-style mud, their young friends summoned for help. As always in Dalton, help quickly arrived. Had it not been for these often overlooked helpers, Dalton would most certainly be grieving today. I know from personal experience. One frightening day last year, my husband dialed 911 in a justified panic. My life was hanging delicately in the balance. Dispatcher Kim sent out Officer Chelsea Ickstead. She arrived almost immediately and rendered compassionate and skilled aid. A second officer arrived and assisted my husband. These DPD members absolutely saved my life and got my husband settled in a crisis. The young boys and I are but a sample of what our dedicated officers and dispatchers do on a daily basis. They are so much more than just the badge. They are fellow citizens who choose to live here to serve and protect. Even though they are among some of the lowest-paid departments in the area, they choose to stay here in our wonderful town. Yet, there's a campaign to kick them straight in the morale. The small increase in the police department budget symbolizes small contractual raises as well as monies for unfunded state-mandated trainings. Now, certain people wish to fail this budget that is even lower than the two that failed at May's regular town meeting. Prior to town meeting in May, both the finance committee and select board, that's you, unanimously approved a budget higher than the one we are asked to approve tonight. At the meeting, Finance Chair Droshene and Vice Chair Irwin, as well as fortunately now former select board member Collins, voted the proposed budget down by orange card ballot. When the proposed budget was dropped down lower, it was forced to secret ballot due to its having been an orchestrated and very personal attack on our chief and our officers. Tonight, we are wasting more taxpayer money to hold this very meeting. I think it speaks volumes that the fiscal overseers are intentionally wasting your tax dollars right now, and it's not rooted in fiscal responsibility, it's rooted in spite. As a taxpayer who was alive to watch my children and grandson grow up only because of the actions of dispatch and officers, I respectfully request that you vote yes on the police budget. The budget once again unanimously approved just days ago by the finance committee, that's still you. Vote yes. The young boys are definitely worth it. I'd like to think I'm worth it, and it's undeniable that our police department is worth it. Thank you.
Sharon Bartel, 37 Sleepy Hollow Drive. Point of clarification, could someone explain the difference in the amounts presented this evening for voting versus the amounts that were voted on at the annual meeting in June?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr.
Chief's got a PowerPoint presentation that'll explain that.
Chief, did you want to do your PowerPoint to explain the difference? Can you explain it verbally? Okay. Bill, do you know the number?
Yeah, the number, the difference between the annual town meeting and tonight's meeting
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Bishop.
Last Wednesday, two members, two members of the select board, myself and Tony, and three members of the finance committee, along with our town Hutchinson and our Terry Williams, we got together with the chief and Becky Whitaker.
And Sergeant.
And Sergeant Powell. And we got together to discuss this budget, because it was contentious, and we all came to an agreement. It was really good. Everybody in that room walked away feeling really good about this. Everybody on the finance committee that night voted for it, and then last Monday, everybody on the select board voted for it. So I urge you to pass this budget tonight. Thank you.
Henry Rose, North Mountain Road. I'm still not sure how I'm voting, but I'd like to say that every department deserves to be scrutinized. Fiscal responsibility is important, and subjecting each department to that scrutiny does not mean you don't value those people. So each year, we should go through this process, and it's not to disrespect people who are doing an excellent job. So I just want to say that. And furthermore, I think we should lean towards secret ballots in the future whenever something is contentious.
Good evening, I'm Rachel Branch and I live at 600 Main Street, Dalton. This special town meeting was called to address the Dalton Police Budget, and I believe that must be done in the context of the entire town budget and must not be done in isolation. All of Dalton's needs and what Dalton can actually afford must be addressed. To only vote on the police budget must not be done exclusively without considering the fact that Dalton is pushing ever closer to its levy ceiling, which Dalton has steadily done over the last four years and are in, and are within a year of reaching. The answer to that question must take priority while deciding the police budget. So I would hope that all of us pause while deciding how we will respond to that question to minimize the chance of our choice, the chance our choice turns out to be something we regret.
Over in the back there, yep. There's more than one.
Sorry. Todd Logan, Curtis Avenue. I just want to, first of all, be thankful that Bob and Tony and the finance committee were able to work something out and be supportive of it. I think that's amazing. The only thing that I would ask, and I know that gets asked almost every year at every town meeting, could the, could the select board please engage with the community more over the course of the year to keep them apprised of all these budget conversations? I've been to select board meetings where the budget presentations from departments are presented, and there's no one there. There's no one from the community there. I mean, I was the only one there. So I would just, I know that it's hard. I know that there are people who are, you know, they're trying to do their jobs and take care of their kids and, you know, mow their lawns, but just doing a random post that a select board meeting is going to be discussing budgetary concerns, that's about the only announcement that gets made. And, you know, or, you know, on the mytowngovernment.org site, sometimes you'll see more detail on the agenda, but it would just be really great. I don't think we would be here right now if that effort had really been made. And I will just say again, every year it gets asked, and last year, the town manager said, definitely, we'll work on that, and nothing happened. So, please, get us involved. If we were, if we could contribute our thoughts and our concerns and our questions in, you know, December before the, the May meeting, and we could talk about it all those months, it wouldn't be contentious. There wouldn't be this contention. Thank you.
Joe Diva, 51 Audrey Drive. To a couple of different points here tonight. To Mr. Walto suggesting level funding of a number from years ago, state requirements were not part of it, and we'd always transfer free cash at the end to offset the budget. That's one. Two, to the other comment about engaging in the budget process, that is town meeting. No one has ever suggested a reduction of any budget. Even the school budget passed without any discussion, which is the second highest budget for our community. So, yes, this police budget did become contentious because of direct beliefs or whatnot. If we think about where we are as a community, when we search for a chief, there was a panel, including myself and other community members, and the president of the police union. We decided for the town as a committee that we wanted a chief for community policing. We had a number of candidates come through, we picked the top, and those candidates went in front of a police chief panel of retired chiefs of Massachusetts. Our chief, Stroh, didn't just pass that test, she passed it with flying colors. Flying colors. The number two candidate is now the chief in Lanesboro. Our chief has two masters, masters in criminal justice, masters in public administration. She knows how to budget. She's also the sergeant of arms, I believe, for the Massachusetts Police Association. She is well-respected not only in Berkshire County but across the state. Our turnover rates have gone down, her leadership is impeccable, and this budget should be supported. Some of the comments of the last town meeting by others that believe they know how to run police operations was insulting. Not only insulting to the chief, but insulting to our officers. I urge us to pass this budget tonight in a very loud voice in support of our officers, our great chief, who we are, I believe, that we are honored to have serve our community. We are lucky. We are very lucky. There are two openings in Berkshire County, Great Barrington and Lee. What if we lost our chief to one of those towns? Think about what she has delivered to this community and voice your opinion very loud for a yes vote on this budget. And I also make a motion that there was a $14,000 error about equipment. I move that that $14,000 is added to the budget. That was announced at the select board meeting, and we should support our officers 110%.
The motion's been seconded. All right, all right.
We got an agreement. You just said we had an agreement. All of us agreed. But now we don't. Well, first of all.
Article One, yep.
It has to be motion to amend. He didn't ask, he didn't make a motion to amend. He made a motion just to play a motion. And then after the motion to amend was before the body, no. I thought he, no, no. That's not what he said. He can write it down. Yes. Yeah. No, I don't know. I don't think so either. By itself. I know, I know. Yeah. Lord, it's all right. I know. I know. Yeah. Thank you. He's done. Yeah. I know. I know. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. I know. I know. Yeah. Thank you. He's done. Yeah. I know. I know. Yeah. Thank you. He's done. Yeah. I know. I know. Yeah. Thank you. He's done. Yeah. I know. I know. Yeah. Thank you. He's done. Yeah. I know. I know. Yeah. Thank you. He's done. Yeah. I know. I know. Yeah. Thank you. He's done. Yeah. I know. I know. Yeah. Thank you. He's done.
And at the meeting, if there was a shortfall, she can always apply for additional funding. I think we should stick with our original agreement. I don't like not breaking my word. I love this town, or one town, and I think we should stick with the original budget. Thank you.
Lisa Turner, 333 Washington Mountain Road. I fully believe we need to decrease the police budget down to $1 million. $1 million. That's more than enough for this town to pay. This budget is way too high for this town that has no crime, no crime that we, the taxpayers, are paying for. The police in the last couple of years, they have added an unnecessary detective to this town. They have added two sergeants. We already had one, now we had three. We now have a total of 13 employees to pay for again in a crime-free town. We have very little, we don't live in Chicago, we live in Dalton, and the crimes that were committed...
Calm down, please. She has the floor.
Thank you. I do have the floor, sir. The crimes that were committed in this town, if you would call them a crime, we have two lawsuits against the town of Dalton, both of them, both of them brought on by the Dalton Police Department. I see how quiet it is now. If we don't decrease, wait until they want to have their police station built. Wait for the millions and millions and millions that they are going to ask us to build them a police department because somebody saw a mouse in that building. The rest of the town employees, they all work in that building, and that's okay, but the police are not having it. This is wrong, and I want to address one last thing here. I could go on all night. I'm not going to address anything, I mean, the police departments pay, their budget, their pay, that's public knowledge. But I do just want to say, for the chief alone, I'll just select the chief, I won't go into the other 12, her overtime, last year, this year, the last two years, her overtime is a ballpark of $25,000. There are many people in Dalton, they're living on social security or less than social security, and you may all clap and cheer, and you may all think that's funny, but that is why those people are not allowed, they are not able to stay in their own homes. They cannot afford it. And it's not a laughing matter, and it's not a joke. That's why people in this town are going to move out, because our police department is way out of control with that budget. And there's not much, I could go on and on. I'm going to stop right there. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, understand that the debate right now is only on the motion to increase the article by $14,000. We are now debating the article itself. Is there anyone else who wishes to debate the motion to amend?
Out of respect for my colleague, Mr. Bishop, as I was at a Select Board, I...
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Joe Diver, 51 Audie Drive.
Thank you.
To just clarify, this was an error in presentation from an Excel spreadsheet, so that's why the $14,000 wasn't in there. But out of respect of my prior colleague, Mr. Bishop, I remove my motion.
Thank you. The motion is removed. Any further debate on Article One as presented? Yes, Mr. Pagliarulo, hold on.
Yes, thank you for all, thank you for coming here tonight. I had some remarks I was going to make at our earlier meeting, but I hoped I didn't have to make them this evening, but I want to share them with you. When I was on the police safety facility building committee, my reaction or relationship with the police department was at arm's length. Generally, it was a heart palpitation when I hit the brake and saw my speedometer going over the limit. But in the 40 years I've lived in Dalton, we've used 9/11 twice, and the dispatch, ambulance, and police response was prompt and professional, and I'm forever grateful for that. Last fall, I took a tour of the police facility in the basement. I met several officers, and I asked the chief to ask her staff if they could provide me with some information about themselves, some biographies, and I received biographies from everyone there, ranging from a paragraph to a page. And I just want to provide a snapshot of our police force and share that with you. Six of her officers grew up in Dalton and graduated from Wacona. Two others were CBRSD graduates from Wacona Regional also. Three are from Pittsfield, three are from South County, and one is from the eastern end of our Commonwealth. Three officers come from police families. In reading the biographies, the words "pride and accomplishment" were a consistent refrain. Pride and accomplishment, mentoring young officers, these are quotes, employing their EMT skills in the course of their duties.
You have to wait till he's done, please.
Finding a missing eight-year-old child, growing up in Dalton and being inspired by those police officers to become a police officer, graduating number six in the academy, being commended for writing a report of FBI quality, pursuing a degree in homeland security and counterterrorism. The group related a healthy balance of work, family, and friends and volunteerism. Some of the quotes from their statements. "I want to be more than a name on a badge working in a community like Dalton." Quote, "An amazing town to work for and serve." Quote, "The feedback I receive from the public after calls." And finally, "It was a great accomplishment the day I was sworn in as an officer for Dalton and fulfilled a dream of mine." Lest I forget, I don't want to forget to mention Wendell, our police department comfort dog. It's a bridge to our community. I'm not a dog person, but it's the friendliest dog I've ever met. I understand that Dalton will meet with difficult financial straits in the future and that all budgets will be scrutinized accordingly. But right here and right now, and regardless of the outcome of this evening, the vote, I believe that our vote is a vote of confidence and a vote of credit to the young men and women of our police force who admirably serve our community 24/7, 365 days a year. Thank you.
In the back.
We moved here several years ago. I'm a mother of young children who go to Greenville Elementary School, and I just want to say that I didn't think a community like Dalton existed anymore, where my kids can run around outside and be safe. They, my kids asked me to speak up and say how much they love Wendell, and he goes to the school, and I just appreciate that extra efforts that the Dalton Police Force goes to in being proactive in the community and developing positive relationships and a positive relationship between the community and the police force. I think we all remember in 2020, and there was a lot of discord, and I think that it's important, and I speak on behalf of my children, to see the police force in a positive light. My children have brown skin, and there was a time period where I was fearful for them with a lot of what was going on, but I am so grateful that we're here in this community and, again, the positive proactive work that the police, the Dalton Police Force, the effort that they go to.
Anyone else?
Hi, guys. Joe Minlin, Main Street. I've lived in Dalton 18 years, and I've loved every minute of it, except for a night that Chief Strout will remember. They are a class act. I love living in this town because it's a safe town. Someone who is very dear to me lives in a town where there is no police, that they have to wait 40 minutes for the state police to arrive. I vote for the police department to get what they want. They are class acts. They do their job with compassion, with honesty, with dignity, and they protect all of us here in this town. And that's the reason why I love this town and I want to stay here, and I think we all should do the right thing.
Thank you.
My wife and I bought a pub about three and a half years ago, and locally, and we're from Dalton pretty much our whole lives. And when we first bought the pub, you know, we had our growing pains and trying to figure it all out, and we made a lot of mistakes, and so with the community and the police chief and her staff gave us all the inspiration, and they didn't go down on us and make us feel bad. They said, "Here's what you need to do to improve on this situation." So we were very, very grateful for what they did for us, and all we wanted was a nice place for everybody in town and local communities to come to and enjoy good food and everything. But initially, we had our struggles, and if it wasn't for them and their support, we might not be here today, supporting all of you and you all supporting all of us, and it meant a great deal to my wife and I and my family. And if we were in a bigger city, who knows what would have happened, but with a small community like all of us binding together and figuring it out and making it right, and it made us feel so special that not only did they support us, but they, at the same time, gave suggestions on how to help us along, and meant a great deal to us, and we'll always be forever grateful for the Dalton Police Department and the police chief, and that's why we're here to support them.
Thank you.
Todd Logan, Curtis Avenue. Really quick, when I was 21 and my wife and I bought our first house, and within two weeks, we had a traveling salesman come to the door with a $2,000 King vacuum cleaner, and he spent four hours trying to sell it to us, and at the end of those four hours, I believed this guy needed the money. I know he had a family. I know that this was a great product. I knew it did better than our vacuum cleaner, but we didn't have the money. It doesn't matter how good our police department is. What matters is can we afford our police department? That's what we're voting on tonight. Thank you.
All right, someone moved to vote, which is calling the question. Was there a second? That is a motion that is not debatable, ladies and gentlemen. If you approve calling the question, the debate ends on the article, and we will vote on the article. All those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye. Opposed by saying no. Thank you. Article One. We are voting on Article One. A yes vote will approve the article and the budget as presented. A no vote is not in favor of the article. All those in favor of Article One signify by saying aye. Opposed by saying no. It passes. Thank you. We have five more articles, so please try to be quiet on your way out. Article Two, to see if the town will amend its vote taken on the motion for Article Three of the May 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting by reducing the amount appropriated to fund town's operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshin.
I'll make the motion as soon as it gets quiet in here. There are people that would like to hear the remainder of this. Please be quiet and move out.
I will, I will. Article Two, to see if the town will amend its vote taken on the motion for Article Three of the May 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting by reducing the amount appropriated to fund town's operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshin.
I move that the town amend its vote taken on the motion for Article Three of the warrant for the May 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting by reducing the amount appropriated for the fiscal year 2026 operating budget in the following accounts. Account number 139, Town Audit, $22,500. Account 449, Sewer Treatment, $68,000 for a total reduction of $90,500.
Article Two is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
the question, the debate ends on the article and we will vote on the article. All those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Thank you. Article one. We are voting on Article one. A yes vote will approve the article and the budget as presented. A no vote is not in favor of the article. All those in favor of Article one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no.
No.
It passes. Thank you. We have five more articles, so please try to be quiet on your way out. Article two, to see if the town will amend its vote taken on the motion for Article three of the May 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting by reducing the amount appropriated to fund town's operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droschain.
I'll make the motion as soon as it gets quiet in here. There are people that would like to hear the remainder of this. Please be quiet and move out.
I will, I will. Okay. Article two, to see if the town will amend its vote taken on the motion for Article three of the May 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting by reducing the amount appropriated to fund town's operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droschain.
I move that the town amend its vote taken on the motion for Article three of the warrant for the May 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting by reducing the amount appropriated for the fiscal year 2026 operating budget in the following accounts. Account number 139, Town Audit, $22,500. Account 449, Sewer Treatment, $68,000 for a total reduction of $90,500.
Article two is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. That passes. Thank you. Article three, to see if the town will amend its vote taken on the motion for Article 22B of the May 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting by increasing the amount appropriated to fund a truck with sewer flushing equipment for the Department of Public Works for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droschain.
I move that the town amend the second vote taken on the motion for Article 22 of the warrant for the May 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting, which appropriated the sum of $250,000 to purchase and equip a truck with sewer flushing equipment for the Department of Public Works by transferring from free cash an additional sum of $20,000.
Article three is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Greg Schnapp, 831. What's the $20,000 for?
Quotes came in for the new flushing equipment. There were approximately $20,000. It's actually a little bit higher than the $20,000 that was, or the $250,000. Came in just, I believe, just over, was it just over $270,000, wasn't it? Or was it just below? It did come in lower. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of Article three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Article passes. Article four, to see if the town will raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide a sum of money for the purpose of funding a deficit in the fiscal year 2025 Snow and Ice Account, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droschain.
I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $40,391 for the purpose of funding a deficit in the fiscal year 2025 Snow and Ice Account, of which $23,461 shall be for salaries and $16,930 shall be for expenses.
Article four is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? In the back.
Todd Logan, Curtis Ave. Just a quick question. I remember this overtime pay, it's been going up each year for plowing, for overtime. But that's what the $20,000 is for, right, for overtime? Is that correct? Is Bud here? Is it overtime pay?
Half of it.
Half of it?
Half of the money's over.
Okay. And it's just a bad winter or staffing or?
It's bad winter. A lot of ice.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. Thanks. Thanks. I'm good.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. It passes. Article five, to see if the town will raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide a sum of money for the purpose of funding professional and technical work to ensure the compliance of the Berkshire Concrete Corporation with the conditions of their special permit and with town orders, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droschain.
I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $59,000 for the purchase of funding professional and technical work to ensure the compliance of the Berkshire Concrete Corporation with the conditions of their special permit and with town orders.
Article five has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Jimbo Doucet, Tendrane Drive. I am a member of the Dalton Clean Air Committee. For three years, Berkshire Concrete has been mining sand in the pits on a lot for which they did not have a permit. When they applied for a permit, they did not include that lot number. They say it's a clerical error. It seems rather convenient. Because that lot number was not mentioned, the abutters were not notified. Past history of their activity in mining sand in the pits has caused a lot of problems with Sunnyside Drive, Renee Drive, and Bruce Drive in the past. And they knew damn well they were going to get a lot of pushback if the abutters knew they were going to be mining on their property. So nobody found out about it until they were right behind Prospect Street, and people's yards were filling up with sand that was blowing from the pits. So I'm telling you this because maybe a lot of you don't know about this, but the people that were at Ground Zero that were getting their yards full of sand, their pools full of sand, they started reaching out when they found out that it wasn't just a drought, it wasn't just dry conditions and the wind blowing. This is because they're actively mining sand, and they're coming very close to houses. They get within like 200 feet of a house off Prospect Street. And their alterations to the landscape just channeled all that wind. The wind patterns have changed. They're not the way they used to be. And they're concentrated, and they blow right up where that mine is. And they take all that sand right on Florence Street and Prospect Street and Devon Street Extension. There are trees that were left that they didn't cut down. Half of them snapped in half because the winds were so strong. So the people that were directly affected were going to the town boards, the select board, the planning board, the conservation commission, and the health board, Board of Health. And they were kind of getting the runaround. You know, these boards are volunteers, and they're no experts in sand mining. And they weren't all sure what to do. So they're just saying, well, go to this board, go to that board. The people that were directly affected started canvassing the neighborhood, getting signatures on a petition, making sure more people were aware of this. My house on Renee Drive, I'm not sure I'm seeing any sand from the pits right now. But their plan is to keep digging until they get behind Raymond Drive over the next five years. And I know I'm going to be getting sand in my yard then. And so we'd like to stop it now. The problem is, we're not experts on sand mining, and we're not that intimately familiar with all of the regulations we have to protect us now. Some of the research our members have been doing, and some of the board members have been doing, they're finding that they've got powers to find Petrika, find Berkshire County Concrete. They didn't even know they had these powers. Right now, Berkshire County Concrete is not being a good neighbor. They're not taking into consideration the fact that their operations are having on the neighborhoods. They're not obeying by all of the conditions of the special permits they have. They violated Wetland Protection Act, stuff with the DEP, and got fined. They don't care. They just pay the fine. So the reason why the select board has put this article on the warrant is because we need help. We need an engineer that's qualified, an environmental engineer, to look over what they're doing, look over the mitigation plan they've made for trying to remedy what they've already done. They're just trying to, you know, hydroseed some grass and plant some 20-foot trees. Hey, there's a whole forest of trees between where they're mining and Raymond Drive. And Raymond Drive is still getting sand, with a forest of trees. If they cut those trees down, they're going to get tons of sand. Putting up a 20-foot fence and planting 20-foot trees, little pine trees, is not going to stop the sand from blowing on the Florence Street. It's not. So we need an engineer that can help us mitigate this and work with Berkshire County Concrete and make sure that if they do get a permit, they follow the rules, they follow the conditions that we set for them, because right now they are not. And we also need help with a lawyer, because they got lawyers. We need a lawyer, an environmental lawyer, that can help protect us, town payers, taxpayers. You know, they've got all kinds of money, and they've got lawyers. We need some help. And that's why we've asked the select board to do this. And we hope we can get your support.
Thank you.
Good evening, neighbors. My name is Laurel Carcel. I live on Raymond Drive, and I'm right in the middle of the thick of things. This morning, with the lovely breeze that we had, that cleared out all the crud from the 9,000-degree temperatures that we had, I said to my husband, do not open the windows. They were grinding crap yesterday. They were grinding crap today. We cannot open the windows in our house because it comes in and lands on the bedwork, it lands on our furniture, it lands on our carpeting. We can't open the windows in our house. Imagine that. So if you don't live where we're living, imagine not being able to air out your house on a clear, cool, windy day. That's what we're living with. And I've noticed in the past two years, my respiratory health is starting to fail. I was a singer. I can't do it anymore because I have no breath control because of all the crap in the air. I'm done. We need help. This is ridiculous.
Thank you.
Ken Walto, 48, Raymond Drive. Can anyone answer the question about why Berkshire Concrete is not being assessed these permitting fees?
I'll try to answer that, Ken. There's no, they've been permitted. The permit for the planning board will come due this fall, early winter. Permitting for conservation is due by July of '26. Board of Health is looking into the public nuisance. So there's no fees in order at this juncture. There may be fines, but no fees.
I believe when the new permit comes up, or the permit comes up for renewal, one of the conditions could be that Berkshire County Concrete incur the costs of technical review of their plans. But at this time, that's not in their current permit. So the town does need to budget some money for this upfront, but it certainly could become part of that permit come November when it's up for renewal.
Rachel Branch, 600 Main Street. And I've worked on environmental, including stopping, helping to stop an asphalt plant in Bridgeport, Connecticut. I don't understand why a cease and desist order has not been issued through the Health Department, Select Board, any committee that could, or any entity that could possibly do this when you already have health problems occurring. I don't think it is feasible or acceptable to wait until a permit comes up in the fall. Please. You've just heard a woman right here telling you she can't sing anymore, she can't breathe, she can't open her windows. How serious does it have to get for you to take this seriously and find the entity that stops them right now?
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please understand, the article is an article to fund professional services for exactly this purpose. It's not to castigate the various boards in town for not taking any action. We're looking to fund professional services. Anyone else who wishes to debate? There's a motion to call the question. That's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, Article five. Move, seconded? Article five. All those in favor of funding the professional services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Passes. Article six, to see if the town will rescind its vote taken on the motion for Article 10 of the May 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droschain.
I move that the town rescind its vote taken on the motion for Article 10 of the warrant for the May 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Article's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate?
Sue Doucet, Renee Drive. I resent taking back the votes that we've already made. We did this at that May 5 meeting where it was to rescind a vote taken years ago. I need an explanation as to why you're saying what we voted on at our last meeting is now not good enough for you.
Mr. Droschain.
This money that was voted for, that was appropriated, is actually money that is no longer needed. So what it does is, this goes back into our sewer stabilization account. Basically, it puts it back where, in a rainy day fund that it came from. And so we have to, what happened is, the numbers that came from the city of Pittsfield for our sewer treatment came in lower than we anticipated. So the bill was much better, much better. So this is actually quite a bit to our advantage. Did that answer your question?
It did. I thank you. I appreciate that this is good news. I still resent the wording of the, if you could have said we'd like to amend or to take the money from one of the other.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of Article six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Droschain.
I move that we adjourn.
Moved and seconded, not debatable. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Good night, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.